I'll briefly introduce our guest speaker, Mr. Rick Cole. He's the Executive Director of Congress of New Urbanism. Mr. Cole is going to discuss with us the overview and long-term impact of new urbanism and its benefits. A little bit about Mr. Cole. As a mayor of Pasadena, California, Mr. Cole was among the first few elected officials in the nation to embrace new urbanism, leading an effort to rewrite the city's general plan to embrace timeless ways of building a target new human-scale development around the coming of light rail transit. Later, as city manager of Azusa, he spearheaded the first citywide farm-based code in California, a new urbanist tool for producing high-quality design. Mr. Cole also championed civic engagement, affordable housing, complete streets, green building, and community well-building as the city manager of Ventura and then Santa Monica. Thank you so much, everyone. Please welcome with me Mr. Cole.
Well, Mayor and members of the council and members of the fishermen's and members of the community and city staff, I am very delighted to be here. I am one of the few Californians who loves Texas. I know that not all Texans love California. But let me tell you just a moment why I love Texas. I grew up in Southern California, third-generation Pasadena. Been to Pasadena, Texas, talked to the American. Rubbed the ghillies bolt back in the day. And the reason I love Texas is because growing up in Southern California in the 1960s, there was a real can-do spirit. That was the time when California became the largest state in the Union. It was a big deal growing up as a kid in elementary school that we were the biggest state in America and that we passed New York, which had been the largest state the whole history of the country. There came a sort of sense of responsibility that came with being the largest state in the Union. And my parents' generation, World War II veterans, they believed in the future. They believed in investing in the future. And our public schools were top-notch. We built a great university system, still world-class. And we built highways, we built new places for people to live. We were growing. We built a state water system with redistributed water, not always to the delight of the Northern Californians, but there was a sense that we were in this together. And so I see in Texas that sort of same can-do spirit, that same sense of believing in the future, of investing in the future, of believing that the best days are ahead. But that's not always true now in California. Some of that's curdled a little bit. The homeless situation is really kind of the symptom of that. So whenever I come back to Texas, I've been here many times, I admire your spirit. I know you have challenges. And we could learn some stuff from Texas, and I believe maybe even a few things you can learn from California. I'm not here to talk about Texas or California. I'm here to talk about people. Because whether you live in Texas or we live in California, or whether you live in Hong Kong, or whether you live in Nairobi, or whether you live in Rome, people have not changed much in 5,000 years. We're maybe six or eight inches taller because of the way we eat, but we're still people. And we still like being around other people. And that has not changed. This is the first time in human history that a majority of human beings now live in cities. Now, cities is broadly defined. Farmer's Branch is a city, and you might think, well, we're not a city where it's suffered, but we're a bedroom community, as Councilmember said. But in terms of an urban area, right, in terms of the vast majority of history, people lived on farms. They woke up when the sun came up, and they worked all day, and when the sun went down, they went to bed. And it's, but over the last 5,000 years, there's been a minority of people who've lived together. And that's what, when Mr. Simmons was talking about timeless ways of being, that's what new urbanism is about. It's about learning the lessons of the great cities of the past and applying them to the way we live now, right? Because we don't live in 1921, we don't live in 1821, we don't live in 1721, we live in 2022. And so there are things that we maybe have forgotten or neglected about how to build for human beings, but we need to bring that up to date. And that takes place, as I hope I'll convey, in unique ways. Los Angeles should not be the same as Farmer's Branch. Farmer's Branch should not be the same as Dallas. Dallas should not be the same as Oklahoma City, right? There should be different climates, you have different histories, you have different cultural mixes, and there should be, as my grandmother taught me, a place for everything and everything in its place. So that's what I'm going to talk about. So I hope that introduction sort of sets a context. I'm not here to tell you how to plan your city, but I am here to tell you, you should plan your city, and that you're at a very important time in your city's trajectory, and that you're about to embark upon some very significant planning efforts. And I'm here to talk about the importance of that and maybe introduce you to some ideas that you may be partly familiar with, not all familiar with, very familiar with, and will vary among the audience, but to kind of lay the groundwork for thinking about how you want to plan. That's your decision about how you want to plan. I'm not here to tell you what to do, but I am going to urge you to take this planning effort strongly, and not just the folks in this room. We can come back a little bit to that. My hometown of Pasadena, when I was mayor, we had to, Mr. Simmons mentioned that we did a new general plan from scratch, brand-new. We literally threw out the old general plan because we were like this. And we had to, because of set of circumstances around California law and lawsuits and referendums and all kinds of things, we ended up in kind of what the old Westerns used to call a box canyon, right? Some of you are old enough to remember those movies.
Don't get in one.
Say again?
Don't go, don't get in one.
Yeah, exactly. You don't want to, you know, and one guy says the other, "We're in a box canyon and we're surrounded, and we're going to have to shoot our way out." And we were really in that position. We were in a box canyon, and we were surrounded. So we had to think again. And I led one faction of the council, and the incoming vice mayor led the other faction of the council, and we were at odds politically. But personally, there was respect. And so I sat down with her and I said, "Look, we're going to have to work this out together. This fighting is not getting us anywhere." So we came up with the idea that we would involve thousands of people in our planning process. Thousands of people, not dozens or hundreds, but thousands of people, because we're going to have to take it to the ballot box in the November 1992 election. And a general plan in California looks something like this, right? And you're going to ask your citizens to vote yes or no, right? And the typical reaction in California, because we're sort of used to voting on stuff, complicated stuff, is if there's anything in here you don't like, vote no, right? Because that's, you're better off just not having it. And so if we're going to get a majority of people to vote yes for a new plan, we had to involve them in making the plan, right? Not just selling it to them, but have them be involved at the ground level. And I went to the planners, and I love planners. The mother of my three children is a planner. I'll leave it there. And they were very dubious about involving thousands of people. First of all, I said, "Rick, you know, thousands of people are not interested in planning. Very abstract, abstruse, you know, we have these meetings, we send out thousands of postcards. We get a few people in the country for 38 years, they come out, they're interested. But most people have better things to do than come to a Saturday morning workshop, right? They're busy, they got their kids, they got jobs, they got everything." I said, "Well, you know, we've got an election coming, we've got thousands of people. And if we talk to them about coming to a planning meeting, they'll probably say, 'Yeah, well, never mind.'" But I said, "Let's talk to them about their future. Where are their kids going to go? What kind of jobs are they going to have? How are we going to pay for the parks and the schools? And if they don't care about that, check their pulse, right? Because I think most people do. They care about their community." That was my experience knocking on doors, getting elected. So they said, "Well, Rick, what if we have thousands of people?" You know, we've been to public hearings, and they're not pleasant, right? Three minutes, and people, "Wahhh." I said, "Come on, there are better ways than just giving everybody three minutes. If you only got three minutes, that's really an insult to democracy, right? Three minutes to sit down. Let's put tables around, let's have people talk, let's have a couple hours to really get common ground." And they said, "Oh, okay, but here's the problem, Rick. They haven't been to planning school, but we have. And we know some things that they don't know." And, you know, Southern California, they love their cars here. You're going to have to pry their, hold their fingers off the steering wheel. And I said, "Well, after knocking on some of those doors, people need their cars in Southern California, and they hate traffic. You've got that right." But they're also paying those insurance bills every month. They're also having to buy a kid a car for their 16-year-old, because everybody needs one. They're also having to pay now $5 a gallon of gas. So let's just see how this goes. We had 3,200 people participate, and I'm not talking about 300 people that came 10 times. I'm talking about 3,200 people participated 10 times in really coming to grips with what they wanted to be. So that's a background, is I really believe you need to involve the people of Farmer's Branch in figuring out what kind of community they want. And they're not going to agree right at the beginning. And at the end, they're not going to totally agree. But if they work together, you can find common ground. I believe that people. All right. So new urbanism. What is that? Some of you may have heard of it, some of you may have some ideas in your head about what it is or what it isn't. Okay. I hope over the next few minutes, I can share with you what it is across the country, what it is in distinct, different places, and what it's becoming. And you may decide that you'll help define new urbanism because it's 2022 and it's Farmer's Branch. So I just took these off the internet. I had not been to Farmer's Branch before. My good friend, the former vice mayor of Carrollton, Texas, who I've known since I was on the council of Pasadena, brought me here, and we went on Joe City, and we've been around. That's why I was late. I apologize. I thought I had the idea that you all would not be on time. So I thought I ought to at least get a glimpse of Farmer's Branch. But this is what I took off the internet. I'm sure some will say, "Well, that's not a good..." Okay, well, whatever. But I can see you care about your history, and you've got some new development, some older development. So there's something called the old urbanism that I made reference to of, you know, 5,000 years of people building villages, towns, and cities, and even mega-cities. Rome had a million people 3,000 years ago. This is a picture, I think it's Farmer's Branch, at least the web says it is, but they also say that Abraham Lincoln said, "Don't trust every quote you see on the internet." But then Dallas is right below it, you know? And this is the way Americans built 150 years ago when they came here from Europe or from Asia, from Latin America, Africa. They brought with them timeless ways of building, timeless materials, and then they adapted to the local. And it was around walkability, because cars weren't much around. And so everything was built so that you could walk there, and you can see the cars are just coming. And I'm not going to read this stuff, I figured you can read faster than I can talk. So, but I want to kind of lay the groundwork. This is the way we used to build, natural. We built around human beings. And this idea, nowadays, we have this term called mixed use. If you talk to people 100 years ago about mixed use, they will look at you like, "What does that mean?" We had to invent a term called mixed use because mixed uses used to be mixed naturally. If you go to, how many have you been to, what's that, Williamsburg in Virginia? Yeah. So I took my kids there a couple times. And you've got the Waxman's Forge in the front, or the guy that assembled the muskets in the front, and then lived in the back, and then had a farm or a vegetable garden, you know, in the rear, and a couple of sheep and what have you. And that was mixed use, right? You could walk to the church, you could walk to the tavern, you could walk to the, whatever they called grocery stores in those days. That's the way people built for 5,000 years. We stopped doing that after World War II. We created a completely different way of building cities than human beings had ever done in history. Some of that experiment was great, right? We were able to house 150 million Americans in this brand-new place that we created since World War II. But it's starkly different from the way people used to do it for hundreds, even thousands of years. And it didn't just happen, just happen. There were some brilliant minds who said, "You know, we've got these crowded cities, and we've grown up as a country really quickly. Let's plan for a much better way of living." And General Motors in 1939 spent $2.5 million on a pavilion at the World's Fair. Now, what was happening in 1939?
World War II.
Just on the horizon.
Depression.
10 years of depression, right? We complained about COVID going on for two years, right? Oh, yeah, it went into May over. The depression went on for 10 years. It really wasn't until America started building airplanes and stuff that they started going back to work. So for $2.5 million, you could buy America's best designers for a ham sandwich and a cup of coffee. And they built this fabulous pavilion. People waited four hours online to go through this. And when they got, at the end of it, they got a button that said, "I've seen the future." You can buy them on eBay for like $100. And 12.5 million Americans personally went through this pavilion, right? When the country was only 120 million people. And what they saw, and this is pre-C, what is it, CG, what is it? Computer graphics, CGI? This is pre-CGI. This is pretty low-tech. But they had this diorama of the world tomorrow. We're going to be freeways, something called shopping centers, and downtown was going to be high-rises, and we were all going to live in little houses out in the suburbs with picket fences. Interesting fact that the designer was not religious, so there are no churches in Futurama, which some people noticed. And so the second year that it ran, they put little steeples on some of the buildings. But people said, "Wow, this is really cool." Here's the genius, which I'm not showing. After you got out of that little chair, before you went out, they had a huge, to-scale version of a little piece of Futurama with General Motors' dream cars that nobody had ever seen before, these were those kind of future cars, at the curb. And you said, "Oh, oh, okay, this is real." And so G.I. Joe and Rosie the Riveter, during those next four years, thinking about, "When this war is over, we're moving to Futurama. We're moving to the suburbs. We're going to build our little house. We're going to get, we're going to buy a General Motors car and a General Motors frigidaire, and we're going to live the American dream." And by God, we built it. We built it in California, we built it in Texas, we built it in New York, we built it all over America. And it was really from this idea that all of that sprung. And there it is, right? And we all grew up in some version of that. It wasn't, you know, always equitable. I think we're looking back now and realizing that things like redlining, discriminatory real estate practices meant that not everybody enjoyed the American dream in the same way. But you have to say, it was a remarkable achievement for America, won World War II, and then built a whole new version of itself. Trouble is, is that, you know, Futurama, when you get up close to it, some of the pieces of Futurama are not as attractive as they look when you're looking at them on the diorama. And we've kind of become inured to this. We kind of think, "Well, that's just, what's the matter with that? That's not, I've seen that a million times. Not particularly efficient use of land, not particularly environmentally sustainable use of land. It's a really expensive piece of infrastructure. We sort of take it for granted that, you know, billion dollars for a freeway, billion, you have a billion here, a billion there, pretty soon it adds up to real money. We've kind of taken it for granted, this is just, this is civilization, right? This is what you do. You've got to build, if you want to have civilization, you've got to build billion-dollar freeways. And when they get crowded, then you've got to spend half a billion to widen. This is never the way people lived before. This is a radical experiment to do this. And it's an expensive one, and the bills are coming due because building it when everything's brand-new is something. Then when the tax base is no longer, you know, brand-new and shiny, then you've still got to come back and rebuild it. You're talking about the age of the housing stock, the 50, 60-year-old homes, you know, the bill's beginning to come due for functional obsolescence, as you said. Some of this is functional obsolete. And we invented this thing, we didn't really, the traffic engineers invented this. It's a, the worst of both worlds, right? There's something called a road and something called a street, and now we just use them like they're the same thing. Road and a street, they're the same thing, you know, where you live. They're different. A road is to convey, there's a railroad, a road is to convey people from one place to another quickly. And a street is a place where you want to stay, you want to shop, you want to walk, you want to linger, you want to meet your friends, you want to live on a street. You don't want to live on a road because you've got things going by really quickly. Roads are really dangerous, which is why we don't allow bicyclists on freeways. But we invented this thing that was a combination of a road and a street. You've got six-lane roads, and you've got single-family homes, and you've got shopping and restaurants on a road, and you've got a lot of curb cuts, and if you want to navigate that on foot or on a bicycle, you're taking your life into your own hands. And this is just made for congestion, right? The people are turning into the Walmart, or they're turning into the Home Depot, or they're turning into the RVs or whatever, and they're turning out and all that. This is not particularly efficient as a road, and it's miserable as a street. Just not a place you want to be. So there's a new word, I don't know how many of you care a lot about English, walkability. That's kind of a terrible word, but it's like mixed use. It's a new word to try to describe something old that we used to take for granted. People 100 years ago didn't worry about walkability. They didn't worry about, "Have they done 5,000 steps?" Because they did, right? They didn't drive to the gym to go on the treadmill, right? You walked. That was part of life, right? You walked to church, your kids walked to school. And so now we're having to say, "Well, we've got to go back to something called walkable urbanism or walkability." This is not an exotic concept, except to us, it's sort of new because we kind of lost touch with it. I'll come back to this picture, but this is a little unfair because there's no landscaping yet on these brand-new houses. But this is how we used to build neighborhoods, and this is more often than not how we build them now. And, you know, again, I'm going to, if you want to say, "Wow, they got trees now." I cheated a little bit. But where would you rather live, right? If your car, I think this is way better. This is really way better. In Southern California, we have seven parking spots for every car, which is why we have no homeless cars. On my count of 60,000 homeless people. But, you know, we've sort of defaulted to this. And this is, you know, you could say, "Well, this is taste," right? And when I was growing up, I thought, "Well, this is just, everything new has to be like this, and everything old, so let's not build anything new, let's just hang on to this." And when I discovered new urbanism, when I met Stan, Stan Dr. Swartzell, but it just happened at the same time, I said, "Wow, you mean we could build new stuff that has some of the feel and the benefits of old stuff? Wow, I hadn't thought about it that way." And that's really what new urbanism is about, is bringing back some of what we cherish about places like downtown McKinney, where we went to Hutchins. Right, Hutchins. Yeah, boy, wow, forget that in California. But that kind of feel of the old-fashioned downtown, we can have some of that back again. And, you know, given the way we've developed, we often have a kind of a bleak public realm. Because things are sort of spread out, it's too expensive to have the nice things. And so if you kind of, it's all magic, right? The magic of CGI, which we didn't have in Futurama. But, you know, if you begin to do some infill, you can suddenly now afford the kind of nice things, the street trees, the bike paths, the, you know, ways in which it just becomes nicer and more walkable. And then you don't have to worry so much about artificially having to walk. I was just in Atlanta a couple days ago, and I'm going to boast about this. I'm not a name dropper, but I got to have lunch with the chairman of Chick-fil-A, Dan Catherine. He's just an amazing human being, and he's given us some funding. He's building a new urbanist community from scratch, right outside of Atlanta, which is where we had lunch. And he really believes in this. He's a big believer in the Book of Nehemiah and how the Hebrews returned to Jerusalem, rebuilt their community from scratch, from the ground up, because it's just been abolished by the Babylonians. And that's what motivates him. He's got $7 billion. That's how he wants to spend his money, is building communities from the ground up that people love. So this is what it looked like, you know, when they built this fancy new football stadium. And again, magic of CGI. Which is a nicer, you know, environment, which would you choose? This or this, right? And it's sprucing up some of the old, and it's also humanizing some of the new. All right. This is kind of the way, if you're flying in an airplane to DFW or LAX or any of the others, this is sort of what you see out on the ground. We haven't done enough planning. We didn't really, this all sort of happened. And we'll talk a minute later on about why. New urbanism is about more compact, complete, and connected. It does not mean everybody's going to live in an elevator four-story apartment. It does not mean that. We'll talk more about that. But it means that things are closer together, and they're connected by the walkable realm, right? Whether it's low-density residential neighborhood or a high-density downtown, people should be able to, we should privilege people, relatively privileged cars. The charter of new urbanism is what sort of started all this. And this is what we said back in 1993. And I am going to read And I am gonna read this, even though you can't. "We stand for the restoration of existing urban centers and towns within coherent metropolitan regions. The reconfiguration of swollen suburbs into communities of real neighborhoods and diverse districts. Conservation of natural environments and the preservation of our buildings." I think that holds up pretty well 20 years later. And again, just as I made the distinction between streets and roads, there's a distinction between a city and a town. A town is McKinney's scale, right? You don't have high-rise buildings in the downtown McKinney, but you do in the downtown Dallas. There's a difference between a town and a city. There's a difference between a road and a street. There's a difference between a neighborhood and a downtown. And those differences matter. I'll let you... We also recognize there are significant problems with the way we're building in America today, which is a part of our charter. So we started building new stuff, like Dan Cathy is known down in Atlanta. And seaside Florida, somebody's probably been there or seen pictures of it, the Truman Show was filmed there. And the guy just inherited, you know, 500 acres of Florida's coastline. And, you know, he wasn't trying to build anything special. He was trying to build a nice town that he would be proud of. And it's turned into, you know, the nosebleed prices because people love it. There wasn't anything like it, and they just clogged it. And now it's... They didn't set out to do that. Over in the middle there is Kentlands, Maryland. It's all over the country. They started building this in different scales, different architectural styles. The one on the bottom right is a HOPE 6 project. That's public housing. It's actually mixed-income public housing. But, you know, it's very different from what our images and minds of affordable housing... I found this on the internet. I was warned, be careful. Big one, Farmers Branch, are not big on Dallas. We're not Dallas. Okay, we get that. But, you know, the Dallas area, there is clearly conversation about how you want to grow. This is where I want to start about what really matters. The first thing you have to start with is a vision, right? What is the vision of Farmers Branch? What are your values? What kind of community do you want to be? Do you want to be what you were in 1950?
Maybe.
Oh, and if so, what's the essence of that? What is it about 1950 that you really care about, that you'd like to keep? In California, my mayor in Santa Monica said, "We got a plan for 2050, not 1950." So think about your values. Think about the things that you really want to retain, that are important to you, history, your culture. In Azusa, when we went through the general plan, our values were faith, family, opportunity, hard work, Latino-majority community. Those were the bedrock of the values of what they wanted to see their city become. Build on those values. People say, well, does that have to do with zoning and planning, transportation? Well, it has everything to do with those things, right? Churchill said, and my students said in my public policy class, that don't ever mimic Churchill again. So I'll give it to you in English, my version of Churchill. But he said, "First, we shape our buildings. Then our buildings shape us." And it applies to our communities, our neighborhoods, our cities. We grow up, you know, thinking this is the way things are. And then we go to other cities, oh, well, it's different. But how we grow up shapes us. And so be intentional, right? You're a community of 36,000 people. You're gonna grow. You're gonna change. How do you want to change? What do you want to keep? And how are you gonna keep it as the world changes? But what are you gonna be open to as the world changes? That means it's a question for you and your community together. Because everybody's gonna have their own opinion about it. That means having, you know, this kind of effort, but involving many more people in this and encouraging them. We can talk about how to do that, but I won't give you time for that now. It's a little hard to read, but design matters. And I want to be very clear. If there's one thing you remember about that guy from California, what was his name? Is, when I'm talking about design, I am not talking about your personal preferences of, I like blue, or I like red, or I like craftsman style, or I like modern style. I'm not talking about that kind of design. I'm not talking about personal taste in architecture. I'm talking about where the front door is and whether you can find the front door. I'm talking about whether the front door is behind 100 spaces of parking or on the sidewalk. I'm talking about not whether there's an ADU, but whether there's a garden between the main house and the ADU so that it isn't all crowded together and... That's design. And that's the thing I want you to remember, is design matters. And again, Texas Legislature, anybody else can tell you, you know, you should not care about design. The kind of design I'm talking about is not about imposing your personal taste on your neighbors or other people's property. It is designing your community, particularly the public realm of your community, so that it serves the health and the wealth and the quality of life of your community. Design matters. This is from Florida. You know, this is the same stuff. But on one side, it was built by a developer who built it the way they wanted to. And then they adopted a code and said that, you know, we had the first form-based code. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about form-based code. It just says, this is how you build a building. So they said, you gotta have doors and windows, and because it's a hot place, you've gotta have a, let's say, or whatever it is called, you know, hallway over that. So start difference. Same cost, pretty much. It didn't cost more to design it differently. And especially if you have the rules up front, right? You don't want to have people design a building on the left and say, no, no, don't do that. Go back and do it this way. You want to have the rules set so when they come in, they know they got to build the left and the right. You know, Starbucks is everywhere. And, you know, you can ask for what you want. And I'll give you a quick... I don't want to bog down in this, but I remember CVS came to us after we adopted the form-based code, and we said, your front door has to be on the sidewalk. And they said, well, we want to put it on the parking lot. We want to put a parking lot in front of our CVS. I said, well, no, that's not the rules. You got to put it on the sidewalk. No, we don't do that. They said, well, you did in Clermont. Well, you're not a Clermont, they said. And I said, you're Azusa, so we're not gonna do that here. And I said, well, then you're not gonna do it at all? They said, well, we've never had a city manager talk to us like that. I said, well, you've never been to Azusa before. So, you know, you get to set some standards. And one way to do it is to say, well, just walk all over us. You know, we're Farmers Branch, we can't, you know, we can't compete with Isit Richardson. But, you know, pride. If it's important to you to have something that's nice, then say that's our standards here. And I can tell you this. My last two years in Azusa, well, I got hired in Ventura, out of 88 cities in Los Angeles County. Azusa had the highest appreciation of assessed value. Hired Beverly Hills, hired Pasadena, hired big, growing communities like Lancaster because we set high standards. And suddenly developers said, huh, maybe we ought to invest in Azusa because the prices were low, and we raised the bar. This kind of thing, you know, is possible. You can do this. And I'm not just talking about closing your streets. I'm talking about doing quality design and making it easy for your restaurants to thrive because the public realm is attractive. But then you've got to do the planning. You've got to actually invest in figuring out, okay, here's how this has to work. This doesn't just happen by magic. You have to empower the planners to set the standards and to hold to the standards. I put design ahead of economics. Some people may put economics ahead of design, but economics matters. The first version of this, Bernstein used to say, well, things that are unsustainable have a tendency to come to a stop. That was a little subtle for people. So he said, things that can't go on forever, don't. And a lot of things that we've taken from around in our country just can't go on forever. You can take a six-lane freeway, you can expand it to eight. You can take an eight-lane freeway and expand it to 10. But you can't take a 20-lane freeway and expand it to 13, right? And at some point, you have to say, basta, as they say in Spanish. So, economics. This is 2,000 linear feet. One's in New England and one, I think, in Tennessee. Which one do you think is paying more taxes to support the services in the community? The sprawl, the way we tend to build nowadays, or the way we used to build? I think the answer is obvious. There's actually some folks that are close to us in the new urbanist movement that actually go with computers and they figure out... This is a little hard to read, but you'll notice the... This is a new urbanist neighborhood built from scratch. And these are neighborhoods built more or less at the same time. I think this is... And you can see the difference in value, right? The historic downtown. This is the assessed valuation, right? And it turns out that Walmarts, pale of Texas, they also take a huge amount of land, right? And so on the per-square-foot basis, they're actually not that big a tax payers. Who do, unless you looked on a computer? And this is a paradox, right? You've spent the first hour and a half, do we want higher home prices or not? But if you build a lot of nice stuff, the really nice stuff doesn't look like this, right? If this stuff looks all nice, that would not be such a difference. This is from a radical group. I don't know if it'll go over in Texas, the National Association of Realtors. But they actually say that it turns out that people like living in places where they can walk to restaurants. They actually pay more for it. And some a little more, some a lot more, some, I don't remember mine. Okay, that's fine. And it turns out that this is highly correlated generations. There are some baby boomers who like this, but millennials really like this. And since there's gonna be more millennials in the future than there are boomers, it's something to pay attention to. This is, believe it or not, this is brand-new. It's 20 years old, but it's not 100 years old, right? This is gonna keep its value for 100 years. This is not gonna, you know, be functionally obsolete. This kind of stuff is gonna stick around for a while. And so are the generations that live there. I mentioned the picture before. I hope you can see it. It's a little small. But these are... This is from where I live. These are two versions of, you know, six-story apartments built at exactly the same time. What's the difference? This one is built in the city of Los Angeles. This is three blocks away, built in the city of West Hollywood. The city of West Hollywood says, you gotta do this and this, and wide sidewalks and plant trees. The city of Los Angeles says, you can do any goddamn thing you want. You know, that's okay with us. This is why I left this. I was... Mercifully left out of my biography. For two years, I was the deputy mayor of the city of Los Angeles. I was in charge of a $5 billion budget. And this is why I left that, to go be the city manager in Santa Monica. Literally, this is why. I put my son Diego in the car, and I said, let's go kick the tires in Santa Monica. And we drove out Santa Monica Boulevard. And it wasn't Santa Monica that changed my mind. It was this... It was looking at the difference between the city I was working in, 4 million people, and a city of 40,000 that could set a different standard. That's what I'm saying. I'm not telling you, you want four-story apartments, but I'm telling you, set high standards for what you want. Because in the long run, it's gonna pay off for you in quality of life and economic value. These are, you know, it's a little narrower streets. People say, well, what about all the cars? You know? There's a lot of places in America where there are a lot of big empty parking lots because plenty of parking, but there's not really much place to go to. And so it turns out, and I used to say that my three greatest accomplishments was mayor of Pasadena. Number one, our general plan, which has been just a goldmine. Old Pasadena's property values have tripled. Our sales tax has quadrupled. And so my number-one achievement was the general plan. Number three was putting parking meters in Old Pasadena. And number two was not getting recalled for putting parking meters. Because people were furious about it. But what had happened was, we built three parking structures at public expense to accommodate all the people who loved, you know, the historic revitalization and the restaurants and all this. And to pay for them, we were charging people for parking. And so they would circle around the block over and over and over again because they didn't want to pay for the parking structure. They wanted to park on the street where it was free. So it was clogging the streets, and we were losing a million bucks a year in debt service. So we put in parking meters. And just to give you a sense, this is 1992. There was a legend, which I thought was just a legend, that there was a public works director in the '40s who'd ordered parking meters. And the parking meters were buried in the basement of City Hall, along with the public works director. And I thought it was a legend, although one day, when the heat was really on me, I went looking in the basement. Are they really here? It turns out, there was actually basis to the... Pasadena did order parking meters in the '40s, as did Glendale, which is our evil twins. Do you have an evil twin of town next door to you, eh? With Dallas, I guess, right? But Glendale's our evil twin. They ordered parking meters at the same time. They put them in first. The entire city council was recalled, all five of them. I looked it up in the LA Times. Over parking meters. So Pasadena said, send back these parking meters, we don't need them. So I come along, you know, 30 years later, and I'm responsible for putting in parking meters. But what happened was, I made a deal with the merchants. I said, look, you'll get 100% of the parking meter revenue to put in foot patrol. And we even did horse patrol to clean up the streets because, you know, they were part of the city, so we cleaned them once a week. But we had a lot of people, so we started cleaning every day. And then some beautification, you know, putting in these kind of, you know, amenities. And that's what... And all of a sudden, people loved it. And things really took off because we were managing parking instead of having lots of empty parking lots. And so they had full parking lots because people wanted to be there. It was an attractive place to be. And the other thing is, you know, density, if you're gonna do density, you have to have an offset. If you're gonna have people live in smaller places, they need green spaces, right? There's a trade-off, right? It's not, let's take single-family houses with backyards, or let's have a giant, you know, apartment that covers everything. If you're gonna have a mix of higher density, then you have to have a mix of green space, right? And you can afford it both in terms of land and in terms of economics. Because you're getting more land value out of the higher density. But you want to have that trade-off. You don't want to just... You don't want to give up some of the value. But it's different, right? It's different than a backyard. It's the shared space. This is the kind of infill that, you know, can happen in places that were built long ago where there wasn't much value placed upon walkability and upon economic efficiency or environmental efficiency. By the way, you know, all that battery acid and all that tire rubber, that washes into the, I don't know if... the, I don't know if you guys worry about the Clean Air, Clean Water Act here in Texas, but, you know, all that stuff's got to go somewhere. And there's better ways of doing it than having big, giant parking lots. And it can happen over time, right? Here's a strode, kind of a rural version of it. You do some small-scale stuff, and then you begin to fill in. And, you know, this is kind of the magic of CGI. There's another version of it in a downtown, which is not particularly applicable to Farmer's Branch, but just to give you a sense of what it looks like in metro scale. But this is CGI, right? So, okay, fine, Mr. Cole, that's all very well and vivid, but, you know, that's not the way we look here. This is a real place. This was built in the fifties, and it was the cat's meow in the fifties, right? Boy, this was a town country building, you gotta go there, take the kids, get an ice cream cone. But newer, nicer places got built, and this place, you know, began to get empty and put their stores and dollar stores and stuff like that. And so they tore it all down. And this is what they built. This is the highest-value real estate in the Silicon Valley, which has got pretty high real estate values. But people come from everywhere. It's called Santander Row, they got a hotel, they got retail, they got residential. It's gorgeous. And it is a goldmine. So it's not just, you know, some computer rendered, this can happen. You can dramatically improve an area, if you want to, right? Nobody's saying you have to. Mobility matters. I hope you have Chuck Ferrone come, because he's going to be much better than me talking about complete streets and, I'll just whisper this. So, this is a part of it, but part of the reason I think we're starting with the broader picture here as you start to plan is, let's not get hung up on, right? Let's not get hung up on a word, or a phrase, or a piece. Let's think comprehensively. And think about, what are the pieces that we want, and where do we want them, how do we want them, how do we want them to fit together? But if you have, if you think about transportation as a functioning system, then you don't get so hung up on parking meters or road diets or any of these other things that become, you know, kind of lightning rods of controversy. You think about how to put together things so it works for everybody. And that takes some time. This is something that, you know, I have to explain to people, because Santa Monica was the ground zero for, have you guys, have scooters come to Dallas? So literally, the first ten scooters in America showed up on my street when I was city manager. We were ground zero, there was an entrepreneur who put those first ten out. Permits? We don't need no stinking permits. And, you know, people freaked out, because they were everywhere all of a sudden, and they were dangerous, and people were riding them like crazy people. And so I was the city manager. And I had to explain to people, cars had to be domesticated. When cars first started showing up, they scared the horses, and they mowed people down like crazy. And they were terribly dangerous and controversial, and people banned cars from their cities, just like they reacted to scooters. It took from nineteen hundred to, Ralph Nader wrote Unsafe at Any Speed in 1960. It took sixty years to invent sidewalks, to pass a law into jaywalking, to manufacture traffic signals, to register drivers, to start driver training classes, to invent car insurance. It took a long time to build, to pave, there were no paved roads to build the interstate highways. It took a long time and a huge amount of money to build the infrastructure we now take for granted. It took decades. And so people say, oh, well, we can't change that overnight. You're right. You cannot change it overnight. That's why you have to think about it as a functioning system. We built a functioning system around exclusive, which works great if you're not too old to drive it. It works great if you're not too young to drive it. It works great if you're not disabled. It works great if you're not too poor to afford a car. It works great if you want to drive a car. But if you're too old, or you're too poor, or you're too young, or you're disabled, or you don't want to drive a car, you're kind of left in the cold. And so what we're talking about is not prying people's fingers off the steering wheel, we're talking about creating a functioning system that is safer, that is more efficient, that's less expensive. And it's not going to happen over time, it's going to take a while. There's this idea of a fifteen-minute city, which is the idea that, you know, you shouldn't have to get in a car to drive fifteen minutes to get everything you want. You should be able to walk or bike within fifteen minutes. You don't have to, but you should have that choice. And that means pulling things in a little closer. So it means not having a giant thing way out on the outskirts, because the land is cheap, but having smaller things closer in, so that you can get there. And then having the walkability to get there, having the sidewalks and the street trees and the design guidelines that make it possible for you not to have to walk through, you know, a vast desert, isolated, hot environment. Because who's going to do that? Nobody. So that's the movement around complete streets, is building our streets so that they work not just for automobiles, but they work also for pedestrians and bicyclists and transit. There's a way of doing this well, and there's a way of really screwing it up, right? And you have to be careful, and you have to think it through. And what works on one street, you know, in Oklahoma, is not going to work on even a similar street, you know, in Farmer's Branch. You've got to be thoughtful about doing that. And it's also helpful to try some experiments, right? It doesn't cost much to restripe a street, it costs a lot of money to build a new curb, right? So maybe you want to just put some cones up, see how that works for thirty-six months. Look at what happened with outdoor dining, right? Oh, take away a parking spot in front of my business, I'll kill you! Let me serve outside rather than go bankrupt? Bring it on! So let's be flexible, right? Let's try a few experiments. Let's not, you know, get hung up on that there's only one way of doing this. This is a basic thing, I don't know much about the topography of Farmer's Branch and how this works, but there's a huge difference in efficiency. In some ways, everyone would like to live at the end of a cul-de-sac, because there's not much traffic on it. But the result is that, when you live on a cul-de-sac without much traffic, is there's a huge amount of traffic that gets loaded down onto the arcurials, because instead of being a walker-biker or drive-next-door, then you've got to go out on the arcurial, and that's how you end up with these four and six and eight and strokes. I don't know if you can squint and see this, but this is a mom yelling at Junior, get off the computer! This is very, yeah, I get that, yeah. Get off the computer and go outside. Which parent has not said this, right? But then what's outside? You know, here's the park. And to get there, Junior's got to traverse a dangerous and bleak environment. Again, that we sort of take for granted, but it doesn't have to be that way. It's not the way we built cities in five thousand years. We just started doing this very recently, in the scheme of things, right? Not in my life, but in the scheme of things, fifty, sixty years is not a long time. Choice matters. Again, just like I said, remember, design matters. I'm not saying there's one size that fits all. Not everybody should live in a four-story apartment. I don't live in a four-story apartment. I am here at the risk of TMI, I'm building an ADU in my ex-wife's backyard, because that used to be our family home, and we hope our kids will have it as their home, it's the only bloody way they'll ever be able to afford Southern California. So, choice matters. I'm going to live in ADU, eight yards from a feet. But it's, we're going to have a garden, and our nineteen-ten, not our, her nineteen-ten house is going to stay in our historic neighborhood. We want to have choice, right? Not everybody is going to want to live in a single-family or can afford two, but not everybody's going to want to live in an apartment, right? We need demographic choice for different ages, different stages in our lives. And that should be in every community, so you shouldn't have to move, you know, twenty miles away to have some of those choices. And that's what, this is really basic to new urbanism. A lot of people think, well, new urbanism, and sometimes developers will tell you this, new urbanism, let's stack as much as possible on our lot, because we'll make a lot of money. New urbanism is from rural to suburban, to a town, to the parts of a city that are not downtown, to the downtown. And there's ways of doing each of those pieces right, but if you mix them up together, if you put a twelve-story building next to a single-family house, that's not planning, that's not smart, that's not the way people have built for five thousand years. You want to have, again, my grandmother, everything in its place is a place for everyone. And that creates a new set of opportunities that we basically lost in the last sixty years. Pretty much, it's single-family houses or three- and four-story apartments, that's it. And you got to choose. And who wants that in my community? Especially next to me. But what we've lost is the duplex, the bungalow court, the garden apartment, that's all just been sort of wiped out. And those were really lovely choices that actually fit in nicely into a neighborhood. The single-family neighborhood is a modern invention. Neighborhoods used to have a mix. They were low-scale, but they had bigger houses and littler houses and backhouses and houses above the garage, carriage houses, duplexes, the garden apartments. And they evolved gracefully over time. You had something that we don't have anymore that would help us in Southern California, they had boarding houses, where people could rent a room for four hundred dollars a month. We don't have that anymore, so we have tents out on the street. And this is a piece, we're not talking about radically starting over, you know, let's scrape everything and let's do new urbanism. It's an evolution. As a new opportunity opens up, what do you want to see there? And should it complement what's already there? Should it begin to start an evolution? That's really critical. And that means, you need to be very careful about that, figure out what you want. I remember, you know, I told you I was part of one faction on the city council, I was the slow broker. I was suspicious of all this new stuff, because it was crap. And I was particularly suspicious of density, because that's crap, crap. And so I was really frustrated, the city had just approved, at our most congested intersection, the planning commission, no slur on the commissioner here today, the planning commission approved a twelve-story building on our most congested intersection. And I said, we ought to talk about that at the city council. And I wasn't getting any traction, it was midnight. So I said, well, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, that we rename the planning commission the reacting commission. It died for lack of a second. But that is, planning is not a noun, I mean, planning is a verb. And this is the kind of stuff that planners do, God bless them. It's important. But the most important thing is to walk your values, right? Is to have encapsulated in your rules what you want to see and then stick to it, right? And you can do that, you can, as a community, you can figure out what you want. And it has to be realistic, right? You can't dream of things that are impossible, but you can, through dialogue and through expertise and looking at the market, having smart people, you know, help inform the conversation, you can figure out what you can do through these kind of efforts. And then you can stick to it and you will see it happen. And good stuff happens. That's how we got to be the most, how Azusa ended up having that economic success, is because we started showing what could be done. And people say, oh, that's pretty good, let's, and then we did a little better, and then a little better. And then pretty soon, we had a five-hundred-acre development come in that is gorgeous. And the first developer who the voters turned down, he said, oh, this is Azusa, you know, you get the, and we have a mix, right? That five-hundred acre was apartments, big houses, little houses, medium houses, town homes. Five-hundred acres, you can do a lot of different stuff, it's very walkable. You can figure this stuff out, and you're embarking upon this thing, and it should be fun, it should not be dreary. I would recommend childcare, if you have a high level of Spanish speakers, translation. You can even have food, maybe even some music, right? And have it be interesting and enjoyable and not just talking. I'm getting to the end, so this is really important. For seventy years, we've used zoning, P and Z, zoning was invented to keep factories away from single-family houses, that's a good thing. It was also invented to keep black people away from white people, which is not a good thing. And form-based code, it's a kind of punky name, some people call it a smart code, that's kind of a slick name. But it basically says, tell me what you want. And units per acre doesn't tell you what you're going to get, right? That's the difference between those now houses and the ones with the front porches. Same thing on the back, but very different in the real world. Similarly, if you have only segregated things here, here, and here, then you're not going to get that pleasant, you're not going to get the corner store, you're not going to get that kind of mix of uses. And so form-based code is not about floor area ratios or any of those sort of artificial formulas. This is how we want you to build the buildings. Again, not style of whether you have brick or whatever, just, this is how it meets the sidewalk. It's got a setback, it doesn't have a setback. It's this high or it's this high. That's the kind of thing that a form-based code will tell you. And that's really important. Is the front door in the front, or is the front door on the side next to the parking lot, right? Those are things that you can decide with a form-based code, that you don't get with a zoning code. And they look different. You know, zoning codes, if you ever want to go to sleep, reach your zoning code. But those are illustrative, because design matters. You want to be a little developer, come and say, oh, okay, so if I build this, that's legal? Yes, you can do that. Well, what if I want to do this? No, that's not legal. Here's what. And you can, you know, you can be more, you can build in more or less detail, and you can have one neighborhood where you don't have a style, and you have another neighborhood where you do, or you have a variety of styles. And here, I'm just about done. Cities should work for everybody, right? That doesn't mean that it's a paradise for poor people and utopia for rich people, we live in the real world. But it means that basically, nobody should be left out on the sidewalk, that's what it basically means. Or waiting two hours to get on a bus to the job they need, right? Cities need to work for everybody. And I think we all believe in that. It's hard, it's really hard work. And it's easy for us to sort of default to, well, what's in it for me? What's in it for people who look like me? Or who are my age, or my political people? Well, that's not really America. America at its best is about being inclusive, and not just thinking about what's in it for me and who people look like me, but what's in it for all the people that make up this great country, even California. And this is what I'll conclude with, you matter. They're actually paying my organization for me to come and say this here, I'm grateful for the contribution. But this is about you, not about us. This is about you taking your destiny into your own hands as a community. And taking a few risks, right? Stretching the envelope a little bit, going a little bit outside your comfort zone. But really thinking about planning for 2050. Who's going to live here? What kind of technology changes are already reshaping our lives? This has changed a lot of stuff. This has changed how I figure out how to go to a restaurant, you know, a whole bunch of stuff. We need to think about how we're going to react to that and figure out how to make, we have smaller families. make, we have smaller families, you know, how, how do we, how do we make Farmer's Branch in the context of much larger, you know, the, the map of Farmer's Branch has white around it, right? But the world doesn't have white around it. The world has Dallas and Carrollton and what else?
Addison.
Addison, you know, so you have to take that in mind. And when we did our general plan, we actually invited the mayors of the surrounding towns to come and do a forum for our citizens. What are you guys doing over there in Glendale, our evil town? What are you doing in South Pasadena? Because again, transportation doesn't stop at the white space, the air doesn't, you know, stop at the white space, the economy certainly doesn't stop at the white space. So think about where, where Farmer's Branch fits in, but you are privileged, Farmer's Branch. You all think, well, Farmer's Branch is gonna be the nicest place to live, at least for the people who live in Farmer's Branch. They're gonna, they're gonna want to live here and, and they're gonna want to raise their kids here and they're gonna want to retire here, and they're gonna want to welcome new neighbors, because there's gonna be new folks, okay? So that's it, and, and I hope that's helpful. It's, I, I love this stuff, because I've seen it work. I've seen communities take control of their destiny. And it doesn't work out exactly as you hope or planned, or as quickly as you hoped or planned. And not everybody's happy. There are still people who don't like parking meters in Old Pasadena. But, but together, if you work hard, you invest the time, and, and you, you think beyond just your white space, but you also build upon the values of this community, the shared values, and make those explicit, right? And then live those values, right? And we found that, we had to, we were on a tremendously fast pace with this general plan process in passing, because we had to make the ballot and we had to finish this thing and present it to the voters. So we couldn't afford to screw up. Because we'd screwed up before, you know, we tried to pass the tax assessment, had three days of hearings, and got our, our, our ears pinned back. So we couldn't make any mistakes. So what we did was we started with values and principles. And, and we asked people, what are, what are the values? And we came up with seven principles. And then we built the plan at each stage till we finally finished it. But at each stage, we would go back and we would, we would have these thousands of people, these 32,000 people would come in, they'd talk and be around tables, and, and then at the, at the next stage, when we were presenting back what we'd learned, we, we, we always started with meetings with, did we hear you right? Right? So we listened, we had all those tables, people wrote on, put stickies on and all that stuff. And when we came back, we wanted to make sure that we, and sometimes we did, and sometimes you know, you know, you missed this. But we couldn't afford to go forward without, without validating that we had actually, you know, heard people and were, and were reflecting what we heard. And, and at the end, 58% of them voted for the plan. Now, 42% didn't. So we didn't make everybody happy. But the plan stayed in place for 30 years, because it wasn't imposed on anybody, people actually, it was a reflection of the community as we worked that out. So you're embarked on a really important process, and I salute you, and I hope this is helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Cole first, I just want to say thank you very much for coming all this way, for presentation, for your insight.
I'll tell my grandkids that, that I visited Farmer's Branch, so they're not gonna believe that.
But, you know, sharing the ideas, the thoughts, the way that your community had, had led this process, I mean, brings kind of new light to, you know, how we should look at this as well. I mean, embarking on a fully comprehensive plan to marry the plans that we already have that in essence are decided. How do we bring those into something that's, that's workable and functional, that plays off of one of them, and leads to, you know, ultimately what our community wants. But I love the idea of start with your values, start with your principles, and then marry in what is the vision, what does that look like? You know, big conversations, start with an idea, lead to other ideas, and ultimately lead to what it is that we all want to see accomplished in this town. And, you know, when you think about the different communities that have tried different things that have, that worked in their town, or, you know, maybe it's not gonna, this piece doesn't work here, but we would love to see that piece. And how does that all play into what, you know, for Farmer's Branch, what is that, what is that future look? And seeing these examples, I think hopefully sheds new light on, on what else is out. You know, there's a whole world that, that works, and has different ideas and different ways that communities interact, and which pieces of that do we want as we look, as we said earlier, to the future of Farmer's Branch, not only just for us, but for the kids and the next few generations, because if a plan is truly a good plan, it's centered in values and principles, it should carry on from generation to generation, and be representative of that. And so, you know, I look to, this opportunity is something that, as we said at the very beginning, this needed, it was something that we said, you know, when we brought this idea a few years ago, this isn't gonna be something that's just put in place overnight. It's gonna start P and Z, it's gonna start with conversations with our community at whole. I love the idea of bringing in other mayors and the towns that surround us to say, how can we work in harmony, because we are a region, we're not that, that silo as a town that, you know, for a long time, I feel, that's kind of how we work. So how can we be that player that, you know, extends to the other communities, that we can work together and we can connect in ways we haven't connected before, that hopefully builds a better community, not just Farmer's Branch, but communities that surround us as well? Because, you know, we go to a lot of other communities to shop, eat, have entertainment, you know, they should have the same opportunities here as we build, you know, places that they want to be as well as you need to us, but you need to them, because they don't have them in their communities. And so, you know, I just want to say, it's a, it's a lot to, a lot to dig about as, as we process this, you know, the, the methodical, and how we go forward, and I think that you've provided a warranted framework that can allow us to take those building blocks and create something that is our own process, that will work for us and, and allow us to move forward. It's probably gonna not just work through these two groups, we have tons of boards and commissions, we have tons of community partners that need involvement as well, business community, definitely our residents as a whole, and what does that look like, 12 months to 18 months? But I know that we'll be starting soon as we go down this path. And as it relates to new urbanism, I just wanted to, to push you to have this conversation. So I'm gonna say thank you for bringing that up, this is the overarching of a lot of different ideas that we've had amongst this council. And so, with that, in terms of discussion, in terms of questions, I'm gonna open it up to you first, Mr. Cole.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Cole. This is very comprehensive, and I think for a lot of folks here, this is maybe a first dive or a first introduction to this. And as you laid out so well and methodically here, there's a lot of components, it affects, you know, all of our lives, wherever you are in the age or lifestyle and all those things. And as has been pointed out, and as we all know, we're in a dynamic state, we're in a very dynamic region, and it's booming, it's growing. And I can recall when I filed to run a couple of years ago for council, and one of the first meetings, someone stood up and basically was like, hey, don't you go, if you get elected, have a moratorium on apartments? And I said, no, I don't think I can support that, no more than we could put a wall around DFW and the airport, the International Airport, and say, nobody else could move here. And, you know, this is part of the big picture and the challenge and everything, but I just, again, applaud you, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to all go home and think about this, talk with our friends and family and neighbors. And it's, I think, kind of the beginning of a discussion. And I have been wanting to have this for a long time, and I'm very grateful for it. And I think it's up to us that we can all be empowered by this, and, you know, open our minds, think, as you said, nobody agrees with everything. When I ran for council, people said, oh, why do you want to do that? People are gonna hate you. And I said, well, people are gonna like me, people are not gonna like me, but, you know, we've got to go forward. And listen to everyone and have a conversation, and again, nothing's gonna happen overnight. But this is an opportunity for us to think about, how do we want our city as a city, but also in the bigger region with our neighbors and partners? You know, we share with the Netris, the, the Joint Command Center for Fire and Police with our neighbor cities, transportation, all of these things, they're gonna be even more critical, you know, as our city and region grows. And so, I think this is just a great opportunity for us to all, you know, start this conversation, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Well, Mr. Cole, thank you so much for the presentation. Many in the room know that I served on planning and zoning as chairman for a number of years. I actually started on planning and zoning in 1990. And so, participation in how a city grows is terribly important, and what we have placed in our plans years ago, we have seen come to fruition. We've had some positives and we've had some negatives, as one would expect. But I want to make sure that people understand that this is a progression, it takes time, we've already heard that, I'm just reiterating that. But this is something that I'm very passionate about, and I thank my colleague, Mr. Chris Cole, for bringing it up. It is something that I campaigned on when I put myself on to, to run for council, that I wanted to make sure that our comprehensive plans and the other plans we had become more cohesive, I saw the trend that we were getting more and more, a plan for this, a plan for that. We need to have this overarching perspective. It's a complicated subject to communicate to the public, and that's a point that you've made. And I think we really need to take the time and the effort to communicate and educate the public as we can, whether it's one-on-one or in the forum basis, to understand where this is going and the multiple layers that come together in making these things happen. I appreciate the point you talked about, for, you know, generations and thousands of years, we've lived this way. That time from Levittown, if you will, to where we are now, is really compact in the comparison of human existence. And I think unpacking that is very interesting, and it's something that I, I wanted to be an architect when I grew up. Five years of architecture at school just didn't seem to appeal to me. However, those passionate things about form, about aesthetics, about purpose and use and function are still ingrained in me. And so I look forward to working with our partners here on the council, staff, P and Z and our community in general, in making sure that our community is as prideful, if you will, and as functional as it can be, and has a long-term pathway for bettering ourselves and innovating ourselves going forward. So, Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. Mr. Cole, thank you again for your presentation today, and again, I look forward to working with P and Z and, and others. So thank you.
Well, I think that you brought up a huge point in this, and that is communication piece. Words, terms, certain things can scare people when it's unknown or just comes with a negative connotation. And what is the, what is the true underlying message of what we're doing? And having roundtables, planning sessions, public engagement, where we can doodle on white paper together and come up with an idea of things that we need, help disseminate that communication of what is actually happening, what this really means, and what this will mean for the future of our community. And I think before we just rush to jump to conclusions of what something might be, I think we all need to be mindful and relay that message, that we need to step back and better explain what this is and what this looks like in terms of every step of this process. Whether that's with our parks, whether that's, we're switching to more, more based zoning, or what are we doing with our streets? You know, it's complete streets, we've been saying, how do you function things of that nature? Need to be fully explained, and it's hard to do in a short time period, in short meetings. And so, communication, like, as a parent, having these conversations that you need to have with the public, you want to unpack that, and showcase, well, here's option A, B, C, D, here's what that means, here's what that means for this part of town, or that part of town, or how do you connect with the new places, like, that all needs to work together. And, you know, the good part is, running this process, bringing in community partnerships and stuff like that, helps get those communication points out to the most amount of people. So know, they know and understand what it is, how do you get to 58%, right? You know, I'm not saying that's the benchmark, I'm just saying it's more than 50% of people in a town can agree that this is, is a path, is a path forward. And I think that's what we're looking for, is, we don't want that, you know, where we come to here, like, is to get to more of, you know, that works, that works for the most amount of people, that works for our city, and, you know, as we move forward for the next 30, 40, 50 years, we're gonna support what we want to see. So, you know, it's a huge piece, and we have a lot about that. Some people, in my opinion, 15% are involved, they're engaged, they love this, they understand it, 85% of people, in my opinion, feel, they just want to live here, pick up their trash, allow me to get to where I want to go, I'm gonna work it. That's it. But we need to bring them in, to bring them into conversation, because when it just pops up and they're just hearing about it, even though you've been talking about it for a year, it's still scary. And the more residents that know they can explain this to people, they can explain it the way it's actually, is gonna help us, you know, succeed in this process.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say the same thing regarding communication, so I won't dive into it. I think it's so important, and I will say, coming on council before, I was a former staffer to our evil town, City Dallas. So I used to work on these plans, and I think one of the things that happens in a lot of these cities is, they, they put together these plans, Plan 24 and Plan 2050, but they're all these iterations, because there isn't that input from the community to understand what's going on, and things change and things progress, and so they keep building on the same plan. But I think that's what makes this opportunity so important, to bring in the stakeholders, to bring in the community, to bring in the community leaders and the businesses, to talk and educate, because it's all about transparency. And I think that there's so much misinformation out there, even in the last, you know, few weeks, on, you know, road diets and complete streets. And I, and I think it's, it's, it's not saying that we're gonna do that, it's saying we need to have a conversation as a council, as a commission, to talk about how has transportation, how has transit changed over the last 10 years? Because really, the last city we had was before we had the 35, the 635 expansion. Since then, the routes that people take has changed tremendously. So it's, it's not about, oh, we're gonna do this, it's about how can we get the data, the strategy, and do our research and our diligence to really have all of the information in front of us, and really engage our community on, okay, this is the information, now let's digest it together, let's learn about these new concepts, and is this the trajectory that we want to have? We can have a conversation, and they can say, no, we don't want it, bring it up to the residents. But I think we cannot do that until we actually look at and take a deep dive into all these different concepts. Because I, I'm sure for a lot of folks that aren't familiar with walkability, you know, transit-oriented development, all of that, these are only words for everyone. But when you look at what can happen, I mean, I was, you know, amazed at what other cities, similar to ours, smaller cities, can do based on what they know and if they have the information in front of them. So I, I just hope that we can look at this with open eyes and take it in and really explore it, is this right for Farmer's Branch? It may not be right for Farmer's Branch, but we won't know that until we look at, what do the demographics show us? We have that with the census. What do the numbers show us? What is the type of makeup of our, of our, you know, working class? Where, where are they going? How are they commuting? Having all that would really, will really allow us to make the best choice for Farmer's Branch, not for Carrollton, not for Dallas, but for our community. And so, transparency, going to speak, I agree 100% with my colleagues here. And I think, you know, one thing we'll need to figure out is part of, and that will empower our planning and zoning team, is when is the right step in conversation with our, with our colleagues as well, to bring in all of those different individuals? And, you know, what, you know, the, based on the groups that we want to bring in, when is the right time to do that? Because I think that also, to your point, makes a huge difference in ensuring that we do this the right way. Because the last thing I want for us to do, and I'll, and I'll bring up the West Side Plan, you know, that's antiquated, things have changed on the West Side. This is a way for us to look at the entire city, so that we will have this hodgepodge of different plans that really aren't cohesive together. So, so I'm really excited about that piece, because I know a lot of things have changed in that area of the district. So with that, I'll digress, but I'm just really excited for the opportunity to go to explore this. to explore this. And again, and especially for, for those that may be watching, it doesn't mean we're going to vote on this tomorrow. It means we are taking the first step to have a discussion, to talk about it, get the data, and see if this is right for Farmers Branch. Thank you, Mayor.
So, Mr. Cole, I really appreciated your presentation. And my grandparents live in Ventura, thank you for everything you've done for them. My grandfather gets out of Ventura Hospital today, so it's going to be another good day. But your point, the things you showed us, I know exist here. Because I used to live in Garland. Sorry, Garland. But I used to live in Garland, and I used to live in a pocket neighborhood where you had to, you got off 635, you went into your neighborhood, but if you wanted to go or do anything, you had to get on 635, but a townie small, where it's this mall with the parking lots out to nowhere. And it's this down, jet-dour kind of place with curb cuts everywhere. We moved to Farmers Branch, we brought my daughter here because we wanted to be in a space that looked more like what you showed us than what exists in Garland. And now we have another taxpayer, we have my son now, we want to live, have, keep both of our children here, which is what it looks like. So I really like the direction that this is going, and I think that my neighbors, who own the West Side, really do also like that direction as well, because that's why we're coming. We're coming from places like Garland. Sorry, Garland. We're, we're coming from these older suburbs that haven't made the commitment to this new urbanism, because we like what's coming in here. There is walkability, there is mixed use and all of that. So I, I really like this, and I think that, I think that my neighbors like it. I know that when I look at planning and zoning, I look through the lens of my children, and I know my children are going to like it. So, because they didn't like Garland, I'd like to hear that. Sorry, Garland.
Mayor, could you indulge me in two quick war stories? When we, I was the co-chair with the other, with my vice mayor of the General Plan Committee, and we brought the staff recommendation for half a million dollars on the plan. And $250,000 was for the consultant, and $250,000 was for community outreach. And the council unanimously approved the consultant, because I'd have a planning consultant. And they balked at the $250,000 for community outreach. And they said to me and the vice mayor, that's a huge amount of money. How much do flyers cost? And, and we tried to explain that this was not just about flyers to come to the usual meeting, you know, where we show a PowerPoint at you and, you know, and you get three minutes to talk. But, but the food and the environment and the tables and the facilitation and all of that. So, so they turned it down. So I was, I had a shorter fuse in those days, so I resigned as the co-chair of the General Plan Committee. And because I was the leader of the neighborhood faction, they kind of knew they needed me. And they said, well, Rick loves this stuff, he'll come back, you know, he'll cool back. And a week went by, and two weeks went by, and then one of the council members came to me, appointed by his colleagues, and said, would you take $225,000? And so, and so we did, we had to cut out, the $25,000 was to involve high school kids. That was, that was the one thing that we, we had to, we had to leave out something. But we thought we would get to the parents and that the high school kids, to your point, had a stake in this too. You know? And so we thought, and we thought they would be open-minded, but we had to cut something. But, but we never spent $225,000 better than that. You know, this is really good investment. Not talking money, but in Azusa, this was not a community. Working class, Latino community, if you're 85%, it was 95%. It was just, we live here. And so I, I again felt we might have a lot of folks involved. So I hand-signed 1,200 mail-merge letters to every church deacon, every high school, every little league coach, every neighborhood association, homeowners association president, anybody we could, who had the faintest role of leadership, and invited them personally to the first meeting, where we had Henry Cisneros come and speak, because Henry's a friend of mine. And it was magical, right? And that, and we ended up having, you know, a huge turnout in a community that had never had that kind of community involvement. And we were able to keep it. And when we didn't have enough Spanish speakers, you know, in proportion to our community, we organized a meeting just for Spanish speakers, three-hour session just for Spanish speakers, for people who feel comfortable. La Comunion de la, Reunión de la Unidad. And my pidgin Spanish and the mayor's fluent Spanish managed to make people feel comfortable. And in the rest of the process, we had an over-representation of Spanish speakers, because they were like, we matter, somebody's finally listening to us, we have something to say, and now we're going to be part of this. So, you know, whether it's hand-signing letters, or spending money, or, or healing people, overcoming some of those barriers, you have to be intentional about it to, to really pull people in. And if you do, people will come, I guarantee.
Right. I appreciate those stories, because I think serious consideration to allocate a sizable amount of money to ensure that our community is fully engaged will be the best dollars spent on this plan. I mean, this plan ultimately needs a $1, $2, $3 billion worth of new development for a county this size, and you spend a quarter of a million bucks and you're 0.00025% of what that value is going to come back to you, and it's the value that we all want.
The city manager's going to be mad at me now, considering.
It's not just this particular place, it's communication of city operations overall. And you've heard me say that privately and both publicly amongst our council. Communication has to improve. We have to do a better job. It's not just this effort, as I just mentioned, it's everything. And we need to look at how we communicate the positive stories that are going on. And we also need to listen to what impacts are occurring in the community, so we can address those and communicate how we are addressing those going forward. So this is just one more cog into that bigger wheel. I look forward to the opportunity to, to address that.
I agree. The ideas that you brought up earlier in your presentation, although I agree, you know, to have meetings and get people to actually come, are these dollars helping with childcare? So that someone can watch the kids while they're engaging in conversation, doing other things, because they're taking away from valuable time with their family. So what is going to incentivize them to come and be a part of these meetings? And so I think, you know, thinking about those dollars in that way, in terms of participation, you know, what value you need assigned to that, and I think it could lead to a much better result. I promise you, 3,000 people show up and be a part of this plan, that number's probably going to be higher than 58%. Because our normal election has 3,000, 4,000 people right there. And if those people are buying in, they're the ones coming to the ballot box, they're the ones having their friends, even now, realizing that this matters. And I'm not saying that, don't know if it's going to be on the ballot or not, it is a worthwhile idea in terms of full involvement, whether it's, you know, future may, future will, or something where we can all put that, put that together and have our say. It's not, like I said, the ideas, the vision, the leadership starts at the top, but we want the true value, the true input, the true direction to come from the bottom up, which is the residents, the businesses, the community partners, making sure that this is, this is very, I know, is important to everyone in this room. Dr. Cole?
Not to be redundant from what's been said here, but I was, I was very interested in hearing this today. From the gossip prior to this meeting, I was a bit skeptical on what you had to say. But while you were talking and while you were making your presentation, I kept thinking, I don't see this as a plan to change the whole city. I see opportunities to make certain parts of our city better. And certain parts will look different. I think we've already taken some of that action with what we're trying to do with Mustang Station area. And of course, anytime we talk about doing anything in the city, people get all stirred up, because usually there's a lack of communication on the front end. We're masters at not communicating well. And hearing this and just picturing in my mind, it's about bits and pieces, it's not about wholesale change, but I think it's certain areas. And, and I know a lot of people were concerned, well, gee, redo my whole neighborhood, you know, we're going to lose what we have. And I don't think that's the case at all. I think it's, it's, if, if the council does their job right, if PNC does their job right, they'll look and see, where does this make sense? We're not, it shouldn't be the whole city. But as you mentioned, people have to be flexible, and they need to be educated and given the opportunity to provide their input. It shouldn't be forced or pushed on them by eight or nine people on one board or five people on another. So.
Councilmember, really good points, and again, if I could, the genius of the, of the process we went through in Pasadena was, we were, we were like this over weather to grow. And, and it was like, there was no give. And we changed the question to, we're probably going to grow. Where in the city should we grow? And how in the city should we grow? So the general plan was basically leave much of the city unchanged for the period of the plan, but to, but to, in the areas that were, that needed investment, to direct investment to it. And because we had light rail coming to put, to take advantage of this billion-dollar public investment, and, and put development around the new train stations. And, and people said, oh, okay, well, that makes sense. So this, this, you know, no, we shouldn't grow because you're going to put a four-story apartment building next to my house. No. But you can put a four-story building next to a transit stop that right now has got an empty parking lot? Okay, that doesn't bother me. Maybe I would have said I hate four-story apartments, but now I'm thinking, well, you know, that wouldn't be so bad. And by the way, the good thing is, now my neighborhood's pretty well protected, right? So that's the kind of thing, you're exactly right, is that, and that's what the transit is about. It's, it's putting things, again, in the right place, and not just having the same thing everywhere. That, that's not a complete city.
And I think that, that one, that's conversations we will have when we talk about apartments multiple times, you know, what is the right place to leave, and add it. You know, there's opportunities here, our TOD, Farmers Branch Station, there's opportunities on the West Side, which is a, or the East Side, which is a heavily commercial area that insulates and protects the neighborhoods that we have. And I don't think any of us, at least in the local council right now, have any thoughts of additions, adding multifamily in that core part of the city, because it doesn't make sense right there. But, I mean, you bring up a point, you know, I love that CBS story. You know, I personally believe that on my time, in my time as mayor, one thing I felt true to is, we deserve better, we should hold out for better. And if we don't, we're never going to get better. And I believe that, especially at Farmers Branch. I mean, we are too proud of the patience and not to be able to get and ask for what we want, we want as a community, and we need to be willing to hold out for that. It shouldn't just let's do stuff, just do stuff. If we're going to do stuff, it needs to be the right stuff and stuff that we want. And I know that some messages have been communicated, at least from, from my seat, for a long time, whether people like it or not, is where it is. But, you know, I think that's, that's what we, as a community, is when we approach this plan, we need to be mindful of that as well, because, you know, what is, what is that vision? What is the standard? And, I mean, you even see that, how, looking at apartment complexes now, you know, about four-story, but what is the highest investment use that could potentially be in these areas? And let's not be afraid to ask, and ask for better. It builds and accomplishes these plans. And so, you know, it's, it's not just the plan, it's the policy, it's how we interact, it's the vision we communicate, and it's being willing to hold to that, whether you're getting pressure or not to see some, the pressure needs to be, we're not doing anything because that's not the right thing we want, it's not the right thing for Farmers Branch, because of what the community told us isn't what they want. And so, you know, I just say that mentality, we need to think about that, not just those sitting around here, those in the entire community, as we go out and communicate this message and have this conversation.
Well, I think that, if you look back to our, how many years ago did we do the citizens' bond stuff and all of that? That was a huge, huge effort. David and I sat on several of those commissions, several of you here worked on those, of us that have been on PNC for the past few years. We have done some communication with the citizens, and that bond committee was a great example of bringing in the community. They voted, for heaven's sakes, on what they wanted to have on the bond. Now, I wanted everything on there, of course, but they came up with a good decision as to where we, and I think there was a better buy-in. And so I, I think that we're very, very capable of setting up those processes. We've done it before, we can do it again, we have the money that we can spend to that, and allot for that, and do a good job. And I think that Farmers Branch in the past has done a great job on that. We need to utilize that again and go forward with bringing in the community. Look at all these here. They're here in the community, and they're here, and I hear it every day, just like you hear it every day, oh my God, reduce the streets, oh! And I'm thinking they're blowing their heads up here. But thank you, city, that you send PNC to a planning group once a year. David and I and Amber were there. Unbelievable information that we received on that road diet and, and a lot of the stuff that's what was done here. And it educated me, and I'm thinking if we could show those to everybody, I mean, I think this, this, this presentation ought to be on, downloaded in your home or something like that. But we just, I think education is the, is the deal. Education of our citizens in what that will look like and what we can go forward with. I've been here 50 years, and I tend to be here a few more, and I know that we've got kids that are growing up here. Gio is one of them that went to high school here, grew up here, you are too, Chris. And they've come back and they bought homes, and what a great story.
Well, David's been here since he was one or two.
He's been alumni all in one tire.
I mean, you bring up a good point, that bond committee, that was community buy-in, that took 18 months. And the reason it took a little bit longer than we thought was, you know, we didn't want to throw it up in a contentious election. But it did pass. And while not everything on, that came from that process, which were these three-tiered ideas, and the subideas from that was, what is, it's a small framework, it's a small plan. I think we've accomplished all of one of the items that were on that plan. We used the bond funds to accomplish the bidings. And then from within our budget, as you go, we've accomplished the rest. The last one on that streetlights, very, very passionate about that myself. But, you know, it's, it's that same thing, that this is just going to be a bigger, a bigger thing, I think. The involvement we had on the bond process, we need to get higher.
It was a great process.
And all of those bond proposals were approved, but overwhelmingly.
Because of education of the public.
And a lot of people thought maybe one or two would pass, but because I think it had the community buy-in, and because we put in so much work and effort on that.
Does anyone else have anything that relates to Mr. Cole's presentation and/or moving forward?
I have one question. I like the numbers. I'm amazed that you had 3,200 people come out, I think you said for 10 meetings, for education input, et cetera. That's out of a city population of how much?
Pasadena was about 110, 115 at the time.
Okay. So. That's excellent.
Yeah, and, and the secondary impact is that, you know, their spouse, or their neighbor, or, or the person that they, their barber, or their customer. Yeah, and the funniest thing, I'm sure this has never happened in Farmers Branch, but we got to the end of the process and we're having final hearings before we take the approval.
approve it. And there were some people that, that were unhappy about, about the outcome. And they, there was, so we had about 30 of them for, you know, like online parcel kind of thing. And, and so a couple of the, the first speakers were from out of town. And they, and so, so they made the usual thing of, you know, this is the first time I've ever heard of this and this is outrageous and blah, blah, blah. And usually as the mayor, I would have to say, well, you know, we mailed you a notice and blah, 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 blah. And he was shouted down by the other dissenters, like, what, you live under a rock? You've never heard about this? Where you been? You know, you could not escape the general plan of Pasadena, like it or not like it. It was just, it sort of was in the air. And, and our theme was imagine a greater city. Just, that was our theme was let's, let's imagine a greater city. What would that look like and how can we achieve it? Can I give one little advertisement? We have an, the reason we're called the Congress is because we started with by having a gathering and we voted on our charter. So that's, so we call ourselves the Congress. And every year we have what we call a Congress, which is, you know, an opportunity for us to talk about what's happening in all the cities and to learn from each other. And, and it's coming up in March in Oklahoma City, so it's not far. And Oklahoma City's done a remarkable job in the last 25 years of investing. They used to, what they tell, what the local host committee says is, we used to compare ourselves to Tulsa, now we compare ourselves to Dallas, right? So we've come a long way because we've invested in, in our community. And so we'll be telling the Oklahoma City story at that Congress as well. So Mayor, you and some of the commissioners or, you know, some of the community or staff will, will be able to come and, and get two, three days of this and, and see what's going on and see what you can bring home that makes sense for, for Farmers Branch. That's March 23rd through 27th. I want to thank you all. You've reaffirmed my, my affinity for Texas.
Is a segue. All right, I'm going to go ahead and jump, jump back in. We're going to go to, I guess, sort of put a table, we're out of the RFP.
Thank you, Mayor. That was definitely the most toughest act to follow. So I actually don't have any presentation. I'm just going to talk. We are all very excited, as you could tell from the presentation and the follow-up discussion. The city is taking on a comprehensive plan update process. A little bit of backstory, and this is the only time I'll geek out on you, not on in a council meeting. When I first started working for Farmers Branch, and it was not just me, it was a brand new experience for me to see a city with three comprehensive plans. I hadn't seen it anywhere before. There were pros and cons to it. It wasn't always all good or all bad. One thing I liked about it was, well, it kind of focused on the area that the long range plan was recommending on. For example, the central area, which is our residential core has always been, it focused on those strategies. Our west side at that time, 2003, when the plan was adopted, was our largest chunk of greenfield land. And that's what the study looked at. Same for the east side, which is our most latest comprehensive plan adopted 2017. It looked at our current industrial and commercial properties, looked at infill strategies and what, how we can revitalize that east side. However, somehow we felt that that connection between the three plans was lacking. When at city council and city manager's office first started talking about the comprehensive plan, as Councilwoman Retana pointed out, well, 2003 west side plan, that's a slam down. It has to be updated. The reality on ground is so different than what the plan recommended. Right now, what staff struggles with is whenever we have a new application on west side and I try to write a staff report, I have gone to my predecessor and said, I don't know how to recommend this because the study recommends something which is so old that it does not reflect the reality on ground. So west side plan has to be updated. There is no if or but on that. How about the central area plan and the east side plan? When you look at Farmers Branch, we are almost at a build-out stage, not totally, but we have very little greenfield left. So our focus for this study would be more about redevelopment, how to grow into the future, grow smart and grow sustainably and still utilize our existing land, which is our biggest resource. What we sometimes fail to see, and this is also brought up by Mr. Cole very beautifully in his presentation, is as a municipality, our biggest resources are our people and our land. And most of our land is either private land, but the public land is in our streets. So how do we make that public and private connection? How do we make a place that can speak to its residents, to the visitors, the business owners, who are going to come and visit your city, who are going to live in your city, grow old in your city, and eventually their kids are going to graduate from school and want to come back? So this study that we are hoping to start as soon as possible, we sent a RFP out on December 20th of last year. And we have targeted, we have emailed the RFP to select a group of consultants and we have also posted it on our website as well as the American Planning Association website. The tentative schedule so far is we have given a deadline of January 31st for responses to come in. We have received some inquiries, which was exciting, that people are looking into our RFP and they will be submitting responses. There was one response in particular, which, or not response, one question in particular was so offbeat that I almost got scared and didn't even reply. It was one of our former planning directors. And he said, how about doing it in house? I was like, no, no. I don't think I can survive that. So we are really excited about this study where, when we went through planning school, comprehensive plans were taught to us as like the Bible for a municipality. Comprehensive plans are supposed to be that first big policy document where it does not only talk about land use. Housing used to be a part of it. Transportation used to be a part of it. Parks and open space used to be a part of it. And that was, I graduated 2007, so it has been some time. But sometime after the five years or so, we started splitting them up. Transportation became its own thing. Comprehensive plans started focusing only on land use and housing somehow kind of got left out in some cases, or maybe barely touched on in comprehensive plan. Park and open space became its own plan. Trail master plan became its own thing. So somehow that connection is missing. And that's what this study hopefully will try to put together. We're trying to make that connection that when your kid is trying to go to the gym or trying to go to some after our activity, they don't have to be driven to that location. That's what comprehensive is about. It's about choices. Choice is that one word. If nothing else, you take back from this meeting, take back choices, which is, does your kid have that choice? Does he have to monkey on, on all the arteries before he can get to a place where he wants to be? We experienced that last two years during COVID-19. I experienced that in my household. We were for a time shuttered in place. We couldn't go to work because places were shut down. And while working from home, the benefit I saw is that for the first time, I was actually walking on those wider sidewalks and the trail networks within my neighborhood. And before that, we probably never used them because eight to five, we were all at work, kids were at school. After school, they came home, basically stayed in front of TV or on computer, that's about it. So that's what these plans, when I put that on paper, it starts from a policy direction and it gives recommendation that gets implemented through your zoning, your transportation, your park and open space planning, how many people are living here, how much open space do they need? Those all become part of this comprehensive plan. And also looking at our current plans and not to totally throw them away, as Councilman Lynn talked about, it's not a total rewrite. So the goal of this study is to, yes, look very comprehensively on the west side plan because that's old, obsolete, but also pick up what's good of the central area plan of the east side plan. We recently did a parking update, we recently did a entertainment overlay, look at all those small plans and pick out what's best in it. Don't throw them away. So that's the goal for this study, to bring back that cohesive form of a community, identify those visions and values, put them down, maybe print them and post them on all our offices and then follow that, want the top. That's what we heard. And hopefully by the end of 18 month process, through thorough public engagement, we'll get there. That's what I have for you. And if you have any questions?
Yeah, just going through the, the schedule, responses to June, January 31st. You noted consultant selection and finalized scope by the end of February. I guess how soon are you going to bring those recommendations both to P and Z and into councils? I mean, 7th to 21st? Do you meet the 1st and 15th? So I would think with enough time to vet internally, vet through P and Z, get a recommendation to bring to us. I think that timeline on scope and selection should probably move to March.
Probably. And just a little bit of inside information, which some of you in the group know, I will be out of pocket for two weeks in the beginning of March. So that's also how those deadlines, I tried to work it where things are kind of reviewed and we are ready with a group of shortlisted candidate in February and kind of start working on the scope before we bring them back to you. But that's a very good suggestion. We can push it to March if.
I was thinking like towards the back, Mark, it says, you know, council approval March 1st, so I think we can push it to the second meeting in March to just make sure we have enough time to thoroughly get through that. Each group have time to, to look at it and P and Z make their, consider their recommendations and us consider those. We look to take a group and move forward.
Absolutely.
I still think that still leaves, you know, enough time to work on initiation and stuff like that, starting in April.
Yes. Yes, we can do that.
Does anyone have any issues with that plan of attack or anything else that should be brought up as we consider going through a selection of consultants?
I like that timeline also just because, you know, we've got the two other offsite events for us, hopefully will all be going to February. So I think it's better extend that a little bit rather than try to cram it in right.
I'm on board with that.
Yes, thank you so much.
No, I think we're excited about this, everything. Great job to Lisa and Allison for everything. I love the revitalization plan for Valwood. I love that you're using a group that knows what they're doing so the city's not having to make those hard decisions. And Bob the speaker was fantastic. So I think we're excited and ready to go. I think this will help with our discussion next Wednesday because these are things that need to be planned for in the budget as we allocate, not only funds for the consultants we probably have, but thinking about additional funds for what we talked about in terms of community engagement, some of those other things that need to be reiterated and discussed next week. But unless there's any other conversation, questions or discussion for the committee group, I would ask Councilmember Moore to close this out.
Any comments? Saying that, I will close the planning zone portion at 11:55. And we will adjourn to the council portion because we need to get 11:55.
Got you out of here before noon.
How many people in between 11:30 and noon for you to take on your way, or you may sit in the building park outside?